Good afternoon, I'd like to be able to call the Pitt County Planning Board for the January session to order, and at this time, I'll ask Ms. Tab to call the role.
Fred Austin. Dawn Brown.
Here.
Naomi Buck.
Here.
David Davenport.
Here.
Thompson Forbes.
Here.
Lyman Hardy.
Here.
A.J. Hemby. R.J. Hemby.
R.J. Hemby.
(laughing). I was going to say, they got a noon up there.
Steve Little.
Here.
Charles McGlockhorn.
Here.
And Mr. Chairman, we received notice that Madison Downing and John Landrin would not be here tonight.
Okay, thank you ma'am. At this time, I wish you'd stand with me while Mr. R.J. Hemby leads us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by David Davenport.
Bow our heads. Okay. O wise and eternal God, our fathers, again Lord, we come. Tonight, we are about our Father's business, and we ask that we all will take a mind of thee, take a mind of compassion, love, understanding, want. Father, as we go through this amount of privilege, I ask that you let us have a clear mind and clear hearts when we finish this particular work. Bless our Chairman, give him the wisdom and understanding to take us through this. These and all of the blessings in our son's name, and all of those in the household faiths. Say amen. Amen.
Raise the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Hemby.
Yes, sir.
Thank you much, and this time, we'll have the approval of the minutes of the last meeting, which was held back in November. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move. Second, Dawn Brown.
I have a motion by Mr. Hardy, and a second by Mr. Brown. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by raising the right hand. All opposed, like sign, the motion is passed. So, as we move on, as Mr. Holloman, there he is, he's back. We want to welcome Commissioner Benji Holloman this evening to our meeting. He is our liaison between us and the Pitt County Commissioners, so, welcome, sir. At this time, I'll ask if we have any public addresses to the board. Had none requested that we knew of. At this time, I'll close that portion of our meeting, and we'll go right into our rezoning request. Eric, would you lead us, please?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. Pull it up here. We do have our one rezoning request tonight, it's from Jeffrey and Diane Roberts, who requests to rezone .34 acres. It's parcel number 18690, it's on NC 30, just west of its intersection with Thigpen Road. Request to go from Rural Agricultural to Rural Agricultural Conditional District, and this would be to allow a group care facility. You see the property here, and if I can, before I go too much further, you recall the group cares, this is one of those uses that used to be a special use permit that was primarily approved by the Board of County Commissioners, and is now required to come before this board as a conditional district rezoning, when we amended the ordinance last year. So, just a little background on that, real quick.
Thank you, sir.
This, the site itself, as you see, it's just south of the town of Bethel, off NC 30. This is a picture of the property itself, this is the home where the group home will be located. This is looking back towards the south on 30th, if you're heading back towards Stokes, and this will be back towards the north direction if you're heading towards Bethel. This is the property across the street, you see, it's primarily agricultural, and the future land use plan designates the property as Rural Residential Agricultural. That's intended to include low-density residential uses, both single-family, site-built, and manufactured homes, agriculture, forestry, churches, very limited commercial, office, or public institutional uses that meet locational criteria. And that locational criteria, again, would include fringe and access to major state highway or secondary road, location of major intersection, proximity to similar uses, and spatial separation from non-compatible uses such as existing residential development. And development would be expected to be on private septic systems and public water, or without, or with or without public water, I'm sorry. The existing land use, as you see, the use is currently residential, there's a few residential uses in the vicinity, but most of the area around it is agricultural, and the zoning ordinance designates it as Rural Agricultural. And that district is intended to accommodate very low-density residential uses, as well as associated public and institutional uses, low-intensity commercial uses, agriculture-related uses, in areas that are characterized as rural in nature. And the conditional zoning district allows for the proposal, approval of a proposal for a specific use with reasonable conditions to ensure the compatibility of the use with the neighboring properties, and again, that proposed use is a group care facility. The ordinance does have certain development standards for group care, they have to be a minimum one-half mile from any of the other existing group care halfway house or family care home. The facility is limited to not more than 30 persons, including resident managers, and all off-street parking lots must be screened with a buffer that complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Staff does find that the request is consistent with the land use plan, the area is designated as Rural Residential Agricultural on the map, and it's predominantly agricultural with limited residential uses. And we also find the request is reasonable in the public interest, because the home does offer shelter and services that's needed by its occupants, and will be subject to licensure by the state, and additionally, it has fringe and access to a state major highway, which is NC 30. So staff does recommend approval of the request, and recommends the following additional conditions: They'll need to obtain a required license from the state to operate a group care facility prior to operation, should have no more than four clients at any given time, that was proposed by the app, they themselves, they're saying there won't be more than four beds, is what they're applying for, and then no zoning compliance permit should be issued until a site plan has been submitted to our office for review and approval, and that site plan will need to show required off-street barking and screening, and they'll need to comply with any emergency management requirements for fire protection, as well as obtain any required permits from Pitt County inspections to occupy the structure, and comply with any environmental health requirements for wastewater disposal. This time, we'd like now entertain public comments, and Mr. Chair, I believe we do have a list of folks that are signed up to speak tonight, the board will then make a recommendation of the Board of Commissioners, and they're scheduled to hold a public hearing on February 20th at 6:00 p.m. So whether, Mr. Chair, we'd like to open up the public comments.
Thank you, Eric. At this time, we will open this issue up for public comments, and I do have a list of individuals, something I must remind each speaker about as you come forward, we need you to give your name and your address, and be reminded that we are limited to three minutes per speaker. So, at this time, I do have the first speaker being Mr. Ken Manning.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate the time. You know, it's kind of funny, I get three minutes, they had three weeks to look at this thing, that's kind of short time, but anyway, I'm coming out, and the planning committee says that they approve it and everything, well, I don't approve it, and I don't want it near my farm, okay, my farm surrounds it, okay? Now, this house was bought by Dick Randolph's family, David Nice's family, great people, and anyway, my daddy sold it and left it, and the lot is .34 acres, and it's poorly drained soil, it's rain-soil, I don't know if y'all know what that is, but it's poorly drained soil, okay, I know he said the requirements are for the check the water and the septic tank system, but, you know, we had a little trouble with the water there, because the railroad went back there about 20 years ago, dumped, let's see, 40,000 gallons of glycol in the creek, and dumped a lot of phosphoric acid out there on the bank, so I would recommend that they check the water, of course, it's probably okay, but I think that's what they told the boys at camp for June, you know, so anyway, my recommendation would be that they check the water. So, but anyway, what I'm worried about is the people that's going to be in the house, okay? You know, right there where he's talking about, the nearest police department is in Bethel, okay, they got fire rescue in Bethel, okay, so there's no stores there, where are they going to go, what are they going to do, they going to keep them locked up in the house? I mean, it's .34 acres, where are they going to park, in the front yard? I mean, there's nowhere for them to go right there, and I worry about the safety. My mama, (laugh) is 93 years old, I worry about her, not about herself, you know, and that's not a problem y'all got, I'm sure, but it's my problem, and I worry about it. And, you know, the gentleman that bought this land, we researched him a little bit, and he's got a house in Williamson, the same thing, group home, you know, I don't know if you go for a job interview, you know, most of them would do a background check with, this gentleman's got a house in Williamson that is a group home, and the police department went to it 22 times last year, you know, and it's a website, it's common knowledge, so, I mean, why are you putting the people in Pitt County at risk? You know what I'm saying here? I said, you know, we live right there in a tight-knit community, our church is there, everything's there, we don't want no stealing going on, we don't want, of course, I realize these kids are troubled youth, I understand that, you know, I was troubled in my youth, but I mean, these people here have got severe mental problems, they got bipolar, different things, and they do need help, but I just don't think a group facility in my area is the answer. It should be located in town somewhere, near the police department, fire rescue, and access to other stores and things where they can buy food and groceries and all that kind of stuff. There ain't nothing out there where we live, they can walk out the door there, where they bought that property 40 feet from it, I got a cap at it, okay, because I own all the land around. So, anyway, I would like for y'all to, you know, share with you a little, just a brief statement here, and I know my time is getting short, but the Office of Juvenile Justice and the Lincoln says, after being in a group home, that two and a half times more likely just do the same thing they were doing before. I guess that's telling me my time's up.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
The bell's ringing, just not right here.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Marty Flynn.
Hello, I'm Marty Flynn, I live at 5959 NC Highway 30, Bethel, and I've lived there all my life. My house is located about 140 yards from where they proposed to put the group home. I have concerns about safety for my family, my neighbors, property, and clients in the group home. It is my understanding that Mr. Roberts is the CEO of Amani Group Home in Williamson, and manager of the Palace of Restoration Group Home in April. Both group homes have had deficiencies according to the North Carolina Division of Health Service Regulations. Group homes are required to come up with corrections for each deficiency. The proposed group home will house four male adolescent residents from DSS or the Department of Juvenile Justice. They have a wide variety of emotional, mental, and physical issues. Some of these include bipolar, disruptive mood disorder, ADHD, conduct disorder, PTSD, intellectual disorders, oppositional defiant disorders, major depressive disorders, intermittent explosive disorders, history of self-harm, history of elopement, criminal behaviors, fire setting, stealing, and a history of sexual assault, including an assault on a female nurse at a previous placement. Deficiencies in these group homes include medications administered without a physician's order, psychotropic drugs, reviews not completed by a pharmacist or physician, the medication record was inaccurate, patients were out of or low on their medications. It is imperative that clients with mental disorders consistently and accurately take their prescribed medication. This is detrimental to the safety of clients and homeowners. If a mental crisis occurs, clients will need immediate access to healthcare providers. The nearest hospital is 20 minutes away, and it takes a while for EMS to arrive. There were multiple elopements, stealing of sharp tools from an neighbor, stealing an apple car, breaking in a car, property destruction, threatening to throw bricks, local police department received 22 calls for assistance, staff were sleeping when they were supposed to be monitoring the clients, there were times they did not even know that the children were missing until the law enforcement brought them back. There is not a speedy response for law enforcement where this home is located, this is a huge liability and safety issue for clients, local families with children and elderly in surrounding homes. They need to have access to immediate law enforcement. Due to the discrepancies presented, the mental and behavioral issues of the clients, and lack of safety for everyone, please say no to this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Millie House.
Thank you, we're so grateful for the opportunity to come before you tonight, so we do appreciate your time and for us to voice our concerns. I'm going to just speak briefly on some from my education background and work, and also from some of the things that Mr. Flynn has talked about, and sort of summarize a couple of things regarding the deficiencies. I was at a prior job, I was a nurse educator, I worked in mental health every spring, so I saw a lot of the mental health illnesses, and a lot of clients coming in for group homes and being admitted, and most of these were 18-year-old because it was a facility, but they had conduct disorder, oppositional defiant, with coexisting emotional problems and other diagnoses, sometimes along with it, some, as mentioned earlier, substitute bipolar, and numerous others, just emotional dysregulation, and I just want to highlight that it is very important that our adolescents receive good quality care, wherever that is, and it is, we very much would like for that to happen. And unfortunately, conduct disorder and oppositional defiant disorders, they're very hard to treat, and it's not just that there's bad behavior or somebody's got a conduct problem, it's a pattern of behaviors that goes over a period of time, it requires a psychiatric diagnosis, so it's studied very well before someone, an adolescent or a child, and oftentimes starts as young as eight years old, but this goes on for a while before they really have that diagnosis. So, again, it's not just something that's simple, it's not just a misbehavior, but some of the things that you see a pattern of are sexualized behavior, stealing, fire setting, disregard for the law and rules, and it's just a wide array of other emotional issues. Many times cruelty to animals and to people, you see that, it's a matter of being in control and controlling others. So, that is a concern, the difficulty of providing treatment, but in putting these individuals in group homes, many of their, these are some of the common diagnoses, but in reading through the deficiencies that of the other two group homes under the same management, much like Ms. Flynn had talked about, but I just want to summarize a couple of those, we talked about supervision, there were supervision issues consistently that was threaded throughout, elopement or criminal behaviors, medication labeling, treatment plan not updated, knowledge and skills and abilities of people who are caring for those. Now, many of these may have elopement behaviors, criminal behaviors, and I think there was five clients admitted that regarding, had elopement issues. Now, it's something that's hard to keep people in a home, you know, when they don't want to be there, okay, thank you for your time, but I would say that there's no interventions or strategies put into place, it very well just may not have been documented, so we just don't want this situation across in our neighborhood, and I would ask if you would want it across the street from you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. House. Ms. Kayla Flynn.
Hello, I'm Kayla Flynn, I live at 5959 NC Highway 30, so directly across the road from the residence that is, we're here tonight for. I live 140 yards from the proposed rezoning for the group home, I've lived here on my family farm my entire life, my ultimate dream is to build a house beside my mom and daddy. The thought of making the residence across the home into a male adolescent group home makes me physically sick. What I want to know is, how does this seem safe? The residents in these homes ended up there for a reason, why would you place them in such a rural area with no room to thrive and no civilization near? That's a risk you do take, living in the area that I do. You're a solid 20 to 25 minutes away from anything other than a Dollar General. We do not have city police access, and EMS services are quite a ways away. I work in Rocky Mount, and I leave my house every morning by 6:00 a.m. It's pitch-black dark at that time, and I'm the only one awake. The thought of having a group home across the road where residents have escaped in the past scares me to no end, because where this is, where is the first place they're going to go if they escape? That would be the house next door, and that's where I live. My dream to build a house and live beside my parents feels like it's being snatched away from me. Who can willingly build a house and dream of having children within walking distance to their grandparents' house, but also a male adolescent group home? You might wonder why I didn't just purchase and sell the home. I can promise you, if I would have known the conflict this would have become, I sure would have tried. The house was listed for $165,000, and it was sold for $128,800, $128,800, and I would have definitely possessed an interest then. I just ask that you don't allow this rezoning to occur. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Danny Flynn.
Good evening, my name is Danny Flynn, I live at 5959 NC 30, within 140 yards of the requested home to be rezoned. The home is surrounded by my wife's family land, which means that if there are hopes of purchasing more land for this facility, that's not going to happen. I love kids and have a big heart for kids that need help, but this is not the place. The home has very little yard for kids to get out and exercise. Also, the yard flooded really bad in the rear after rain, and it's very close to a very busy highway. The home has no community water, because we don't have any out our way. We've been told it is coming for the last 28 years, but it still hasn't. Also, the Wi-Fi out our way is very slow. My daughter has always said that she was going to build beside us one day, but if this were to pass, that would change her decision. We are very concerned with safety from the trouble teams, and if that could possibly, if they could possibly sneak away, it could cause all of us a lot of trouble. Between theft and possible fire settings, this could be big trouble. Alpine Gas Company is only 250 yards away, so, from the home, which could be a catastrophe if a fire was set. We are in a very rural area, which means response time for police or EMT could take a while when needed. Again, there's just got to be a better place for these kids to be placed. I have to ask, would any of you like this to happen in front of your home? Please don't allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Susan Manning.
Good evening, I'm Susan Manning, and my address is 6116 NC 30, Bethel. Most of what I wanted to say has already been said by my family, but I would like to say that it's my husband's land, I have been here 49 years, so, I haven't been here the whole time, but Ms. Ruth Randolph and I were really good friends, she was friends of all of us. In fact, when she decided to sell the house, she called me, she says, Susan, I am not going to sell this house unless we find somebody that will really be a good neighbor. Well, she kept having things to happen, and they weren't passing it, like inspections to be passed and stuff, I think they put a roof on the house today. But anyway, she ended up taking less money because she didn't want her son to have to continue to work on the house, because he's got rental property too. So, I taught for 25-plus years at North Pitt High School. I went to North Pitt High School, I taught at North Pitt High School, and I still go to ball games at North Pitt High School, but I taught children from group homes, and it changed through the years. If you have behavior issues, you can deal with that. When you've got 25 other kids, you can kind of talk them through it, but if you've got mental health issues that have already been mentioned, they need to be on medication. If there's a deficiency, it doesn't need to be six months, six weeks, six hours, six minutes, they need it, because their brains don't work like ours. You just, in fact, the kids that I had that were bipolar, when I figured out what was wrong with them, they were, it was a brother and a sister. The brother, he came in one day ranting and raving, cussing words I had never heard of. Well, I immediately knew it was bipolar, because I was familiar with that. So, most of the time, rather than being in class, he was sitting with a counselor, just to contain him. His sister, who was very quiet, you would not have known she was sick, one day, I was at a meeting with a youth group, and there was a sub in there. Well, I taught food service, so there were kitchens, like five different kitchens. When I got back, there was a kid that had bullied her, well, she went in the kitchen and pulled a knife at him. That was at North Pitt High School, and there were just two incidences that I had while I was out there. But I'm just really afraid for four to five elderly women in their 80s and 90s living by their cell. Sure, they can call their family, and we can get there quicker than the sheriff, but that is terrifying. In fact, if Mr. Dick Randolph was living, I don't think he would want Ms., I mean, if he knew about it, I don't think he would want Ms. Ruth living in that, this community either. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That is a list of speakers that I have, that have signed up to speak. Is any...
Applicants are at the bar.
And we do have the applicants here, Jeff and Diane Roberts, here to answer any questions for the board, or from, any questions, no? Any questions from the board members?
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I had a new replacement a couple of weeks ago. I'd like to address the entire board, if you'd be able to change.
You're Mr. Roberts, right?
Yes, my name is Jeff Roberts. I currently live in Williamson, North Carolina.
Mr. Roberts, if you speak in the line of...
Yes, yes, I can, I'm sort of soft-spoken. My name is Jeff Roberts, Jeffrey Roberts, my wife Diane. I currently live in Williamson, North Carolina. I lived in Greenville, Pitt County, from 1986 until 2009. I want to address mental health, please allow me, because Greenville is a city that provides health, it's doctor, school, the holistic health for a person is body and the mind, mental health, mental health. You can't, you can be well in your body, but you have mental illness. Mental illness does not just strike some families, it can strike, or it can occur in any family. It can occur in two-family homes. It can occur, and when I say mental health, let me, depression, schizophrenia, bipolar, oppositional defiance, and a whole slew of mental illnesses can occur in anyone. One of the things that I think makes Greenville strong is that we provide here, at the School of Medicine, at East Carolina University, School of Allied Health, we provide nurses, some of the finest nurses in the nation, some of the fine physical doctors in the nation. We are ranked in U.S. News in the top 10 in providing rural, rural care for doctors. The area that we are addressing is mental health, and mental health occurs, as I said, in all ages. I, there's a story, and I bring it out, I was stricken with cancer in 2009, I had the last stage of lymphoma in 2009, and because of Dr. Leo Jenkins and the cancer center, I was the last person, I believe, that received a stem cell transplant, okay? And after that, well, I received a epiphany to start a residential facility, and I couldn't do it in Pitt County, but I could do it in Martin County, so I moved back into Martin County and started facility in 1974, and we have helped individuals from all over the state on every level of income, on every ethnic level, on every race level. We've done that. I have two kids now in the residential facility in Martin County that are straight A students, straight A... I have two kids now in the residential facility in, in Martin County that are straight A students, straight A students. They're not there because of something they did themselves. They are there because of something their parents did, and that's why they remain there. Now, are they bad kids? I shrink away from the thing of saying bad kids. What is a bad kid? Is it a kid that was abused when he was a child? Is it was a kid that was slapped in his face constantly by a parent that didn't want to hear what he had to say? Was it a child that was ADHD because his mind went a little faster than everyone else? And what he was being taught was not enough to satisfy the energy that he has in him? We received the contract from Trillium Health Resources that there was a need in Pitt County for Level Three group homes. That's what we provide. It is a twenty-four-hour staff security group home. Two staff are all, always on duty. And it will be four beds of adolescent males. It will be cameras on the inside, cameras on the out. Uh, we will have alarms on all the windows and all the doors in case someone elopes. Can I guarantee you that someone will not elope? I can't do that. Because I've had them take the alarms off. I've had them to be very clever in that way. My time is up. Well, I, are there any questions that I can answer, please? I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I got a question. If you had all them alarms on the windows.
You need to come up to the podium, sir.
Okay. If you had all those, if you had all those alarms on the windows, how did them twenty-two times, the police go out there to the house?
Okay, okay, the twenty-two times, police.
Come back to the.
Okay. Whenever we feel like a consumer is a threat to any other consumer or to a staff, the wisest thing we tell them to do is call law enforcement. We're not, we are licensed to use what we call a therapeutic home. And then, to decrease liability, it is best to call law enforcement to witness it if the client does not, uh, decelerate or de-escalate his behaviors. And there are, there are many residential facilities in Pitt County and all over the state. Because, uh, we're not talking about kids from other nations or other states. Most of the time, it's kids in our counties. That's who we're providing for, kids in Pitt County. And, uh, we have kids that are, that, that whose life have turned around, who've gone to the army, gone to the navy, that have, and, and some of them made bad decisions. But just like us, you know, we are, that's, that's what they are, I mean.
We're coming in. I'll leave you alone.
Yes, sir.
In other words, what you're telling me is, I'm old farm boy, so I use this language here, the horse is at the barn when you call the police department. And I don't know about Paula Dance, but I'm pretty sure our sheriff's department ain't got time to make twenty-two calls to Bethel, North Carolina, thirty minutes away from here. Because I think they're busy in Greenville looking after the folks over there. That's up to these people right here.
Well, I understand, and.
I've got a question. So, I know you were talking about the security, um, and the cameras, but there was one instance where the, um, one of the clients hacked into the, the cameras.
I mean, this is up to you, but I agree with you.
Hacked in the cell phones and everything else, so the cameras weren't even working. And I know you're saying that they, um, you know, they're twenty-four hours, somebody's watching them. But then, there was some instances where, um, the staff fell asleep. So, I mean, I'm not, that doesn't sound very secure and safe to me.
I understand that. Okay, and, and let, let me sort of explain, uh, the tech, the IT part. Kids are smarter than we are. They can hack into our phones, our computers, and everything. And what we're finding out that, uh, when kids went to school during COVID, they had computers. And they knew how to go around every, every safeguard. And they could go all around the world. They could talk to their friends, they could talk to their mother, they could do that. And, uh, that was, uh, that was one of the issues. Uh, we, we, we were als, we are also, I like to say this about the facility, we are su, we are insured, we are insured. We have to cover one million dollars worth of policy on the car, three billion on liability, and, uh, another worth coverage on everything else. And, uh,
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Thank you for your insight, and let me just ask right now, from the board members, I need to ask you, are there any questions from the board members for Mr. Roberts?
Yes, sir. Um, of the twenty-two times that the police were called to your facility, how many of those times were the clients incarcerated because of that particular event?
The clients were not incarcerated. Okay, they, they were not incarcerated. Most of the calls was, uh, we were just at the end of COVID, and the kids had been locked up. And when I say locked up, all of us had. We'd been in quarantine. And when they got a chance to walk the road, they'd walk the road. And, uh, uh, that, that was, uh, that was main, one of the main issues.
One further question, when the clients, um, are allowed to leave the physical part of the facility, are they supervised directly or do they have free time?
They're supervised. Um, in most cases, there are two staff members present with all the kids at each time.
I'm sorry, I understand that part, but when, are they allowed to walk, um, outside of the property?
They're, they're allowed to walk outside of the property, not off of the premises.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Okay, you know, un, unless given permission and we watch them. They're, they're always, they'll be continuously supervised.
Thompson.
Couple of questions. Uh, when you say youth, uh, what's, what's the age range in these homes?
Okay, the age range, the age range that we have here would be fourteen to seventeen.
And, uh, you have two people in the house all the time. So, there'd be up to six people in the house twenty-four-seven?
There'll be, there will be up to six, yes.
Um, the two individuals in the home, who are they?
The two individuals in the home would be staff, trained staff.
And, and they're, they're trained and prepared how?
They're trained with first aid CPR, uh, NCI, AMV, which would be, uh, a nonviolent crisis intervention. They will also be trained with, uh, what we call special populations, understanding how to work with various, uh, types of mental illness. Um, they will be trained in person-centered thinking, person-centered training. They'll also be trained in documentation, uh, as well as, uh, clients' rights, and nonviolent crisis intervention or crisis management.
Are those, uh, are they licensed individuals or are they?
No, no, no.
Is that a training you provide?
Okay, they will not be licensed, okay? Now, we are supervised by licensed professionals, which they are licensed. Okay, the licensed professional. Then qualified professional, which is, is a qualified mental health professional. Then the staff, which would be, uh, rehabilitation tech. And each consumer will have a psychiatrist, will have a therapist, one or two, and will have a medical doctor. And in this case, a DSS worker or DJJ worker.
And one final question, uh, to kind of follow up on the being allowed to walk on the property. What kind of therapeutic activities could one expect outside the home?
Okay.
In that place.
Okay, we, uh, our kids do what other kids do. Okay, and let me explain. Our kids go to Airbnb, our kids go to the mu, movies, our kids go to the mall. Our kids love Christmas. Our kids, and some of them at this time, they excel in school, they play sports, they, uh, participate in band. And I don't, I've learned this, don't say bad kids. You know, that, that's unfair, because that, that's unfair. And then, uh, maybe there's a reason why someone is defiant. You know, maybe there's a reason why they have anger in them. Okay, I'm, I'm.
Mr. Ebby?
Yes, sir. My question is of the property. Uh, one of the presenters stated that the property floods, flooding in, on the property. And as one of my fellow board members asked you about the activities on the outside, if you, if the property is flooding, how would you be able to allow them to go outside? And are you planning to correct this if this is a true statement?
We will correct it, but I, I want to, uh, remind you, we're going to have vans. We are, we'll be transit, we'll be coming to Greenville. There are a lot of activities in Greenville. There are games, uh, I took a whole group to the ECU game versus Cincinnati. And we'll be going to baseball games. We'll be, we'll be pretty active. And Greenville is a city that is friendly to those needing mental health. I want you to know that, because that is a part of holistic healthcare.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, do any of the four residents have a history of violence or sexual assault?
Let me, let me address that. We don't have the residence there. Okay? Before we receive a residence, okay, they have to apply. I request the director or the LP, which is a licensed professional, requests what we call a comprehensive clinical assessment. And our clinical team reviews the comprehensive clinical assessment. The clinical assessment will tell you all about the history of the kid. Uh, and in this particular case, especially now since, because, uh, uh, kids are different after COVID. I don't know, you know, it's different, it's a, it's a, it's a little more, uh, it's different after COVID. We review that and address the, the risk. And if a kid is not, if a kid is aggressive physically to staff and others, we will not accept them.
Okay. Well, perhaps I should ask this question. Do any of the proposed, uh, when the comprehensive, uh, assessment is done, and it is determined that one of these young men has been involved in a, in an act of sexual assault or physical violence? Is that, is that something that would cause them to be excluded from the home? Or is it something that would just be, uh, dealt with therapeutically?
Okay, uh, sexual violence would be different. Okay, physical violence, physical violence could be a kid getting beat up in a group home or in another facility, and they defend themselves. That, that's different. You, you look at it according to merit of the kid, and also you'll, you'll interview the individual.
Okay.
And talk to the, his therapist.
Okay, and, and is it my understanding that the, it is proposed that all of the residents will be enrolled in, in school, all four of them?
All of the individuals by law must be enrolled in some type of educational facility.
Okay.
Educational, uh.
And, and when they take part in an activity, are there still two people in the house, even though they might be off-site or not?
Generally, if they're at school, we are not.
Okay.
Uh, we are not, we are, we're not allowed.
So, if they're, so if they're not in school, there wouldn't be a need for supervisors to be in the house, as you were saying?
What I'm saying is, if the kids are in school, we're not there in school supervising them. If they're at home, we'll be there supervising them.
Just one second. Now, I assume, but you can correct me, that the staff are not qualified mental health professionals, is that correct?
Some of the staff.
That are in the home.
Okay, okay, there's some, okay, the specification and definition of a qualified mental health professional through the state of North Carolina is this. If the person has a four-year degree in human services and two years' experience in the field, that qualifies them as a qualified, uh, health professional. Or if they have four years, four years' experience, a four-year degree, and four years' experience in the mental health field, that qualifies them as a mental health professional.
So, a four-year degree and four years of experience.
That qualifies, right, in the field.
And when you say qualifies them, does that mean that the ones that you employ at the house will be qualified?
One of the, the qualified professional, not every staff member, okay, will be a qualified mental health. They will be a, they will be a certified rehabilitation technician.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have another question.
Thanks, sir.
I have a question.
David?
Um, Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Appreciate what you and Ms. Roberts do. I mean, you all, you definitely provide a service that we need in Pitt County. And I appreciate you coming tonight and explaining to us, um, what, what all this is about. My question to you is, uh, upon what, what criteria did you use when you chose this property? And, and, and just let me go further. I, it would, it would seem that this kind of property would be better suited in closer proximity to law enforcement, uh, in a, in an area where there was more for the, the, uh, the clients there to do, and it just, just help, help, help us understand why this would be a good fit for, for here.
Okay. Uh, proximity to activities, I think is ideal. I, I bring people from Williamson to participate in activities over here, okay? Because Greenville has a slew of things, it has festivals, it has fairs. Okay, we will be in Pitt County, only eleven miles away. Uh, uh, and, uh, we will be eleven miles away from one of the finest hospitals in eastern North Carolina for medical, mental health, some of the finest psychiatrists, some of the finest therapists. We will be just eleven minutes away, so it's ideal. Uh, and we're, we're in a community that understands mental health on every level. Did you know this, and I'm going to bring out this point, that after COVID, one of the greatest challenges at our university, East Carolina University, was mental health challenges? Because that was such a great disruption in our lifestyle. Okay, and so, uh, uh, we're in an ideal place.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ebby.
No question for you. I want to address the board.
Yes.
Address the board.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman and the board, I'm listening to this presentation tonight, in all, in all fairness and in good consciousness. My background and experience, um, I've worked in a group home. And what the applicant has talked about and what various persons have got up and talked about is very real. Your fears are real. And all good consciousness, I could not sit on this board and vote for this request because what you are talking about, uh, is very real. Those people who are living by themselves is real. Those clients will leave the homes sometimes, and like you said, by the time you get there, it'd be too late. Um, and so, in all good consciousness, I'm looking at law enforcement, the time that they can get there. Come on, that's too far away. The ones that we worked with was across the street, and sometimes when they got there, it was whatever. And so, I'm being off, I want to be fair to the board, to let them know. to let them know that this facility is, is too far out. Um, I'm looking at the, uh, the activities can be done around that particular property. There's nothing, there's, there's not actually nothing in that proximity to do. So in all fairness, this is just not the right place. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Any other questions or comments from the board? All minds clear as far as the board? And this time the chair will entertain a motion to, I'm sorry, Eric, did you wanna say something else prior to me jumping there?
No, sir. Just, um, reiterate, staff's recommendation is approval, and we do have the additional conditions, uh, we had placed, recommending on the screen.
The chair will entertain a motion to either approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make the recommendation that we do not approve this rezoning request.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that this, uh, proposal be denied. Is that what I'm hearing? Have a motion and a second, any other conversation? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by raising a right hand? All opposed, like sign? The motion is to be denied on this.
Thanks, sir. Just, just a reminder for the folks that, that have attended tonight and for Mr. Roberts. Again, this will still go to the Board of County Commissioners in February, uh, and they'll all receive, uh, separate notices for that meeting.
Mr. Jordan?
Members can hear me. Um, just need to take action to make some type of statement about whether or not you believe this is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan or not. It doesn't have any bearing on your overall recommendation to approve or deny. You just have to adopt some statement about whether or not you believe it is consistent or not. I'll say on page forty-two of your staff report, there's a section called Planning Staff Review and Recommendation. The third paragraph there, that is staff's recommendation regarding this factor that I'm speaking about. This board just needs to include in some action whether or not you agree with that statement or you find it inconsistent. Um, it's just a procedural matter that has to be in your written recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Ford.
Mr. Ford?
You mentioned paragraph three. If we say that, that we agree it's consistent with the, the, the plan, does that plan also include, uh, in the public interest?
Um, so, uh, no, and if I could just, the statement that you have to adopt for consistency is a little bit different than what the governing board has to adopt. And so what staff has presented in what I would call paragraph number four talks about reasonable in the public interest because the governing board, the county commissioners, have to address that aspect. But you, as the planning board, just have to talk about consistency. And that is, um, as I call it, the third paragraph on page forty-two.
Right.
And so I would suggest to you, you just adopt that or say it's inconsistent, just that number three, and have nothing else to be included in your recommendation, uh, your written recommendation to the governing board other than your denial and some statement about consistency or not. I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I, I move that the board find that it is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. And nevertheless, we deny approval. Is that okay, Mr. Attorney?
That is okay.
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 In other words, in other words, the, putatively, the comprehensive land use plan permits this, but it's not a permitted use until we say it is. Do you, do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
So that's what I'm trying to say.
I understand, and that is a motion, right?
Yes, sir.
Second motion.
Second motion and a second. And I would ask for now, any comments that you'd like to have on this motion? And I would say if, in the same time in that third paragraph, another word that kinda jumps out at me, it says with limited resi- residential uses. And all at once, in this particular case, I'm not sure that's within the limits. So I guess I'm seeing what Mr. McGlory has said kinda eloquently, okay? All right. Do you have another comment, Mr. Thorsten?
No, no further comment.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by raising the right hand? All opposed, like sign? The motion passes? Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we've been discussing the next item quite a long while. We'll be talking more about the subdivision ordinance over the upcoming months. Just wanted to report back to the full board that again, at last, our last meeting, three of the planning board members were appointed to the subdivision ordinance review committee. Uh, Mr. Fred Austin, Mr. Thompson Forbes, also Mr. Sonny McLawhorn. Also, as we've discussed further over the last couple of months, trying to solicit other folks that were part of that structured committee. Uh, the chairman, trying to, in an attempt to make it an odd-numbered committee, uh, sought to, uh, be included as well as Landon Weaver, one of the developers with Bill Clark Holmes, Bobby Tripp, and also as an engineer, Brian Pergundas. So that is your full complement of committee members. Uh, those of you that are serving in this capacity, your work begins next month. Um, so specifically to those members that are on the board or on this committee, staff is looking to start meeting prior to your meetings, your regularly scheduled planning board meetings at four PM. So, Sonny, okay? Thompson, can you make a four o'clock?
You do that, yeah.
For the most part, I think I can figure it out.
For the most part, okay.
Figure it out.
Fred, does that suit you? We will go about that, making sure that the other folks, they have tentatively said they could. Uh, we'll go ahead and confirm that. Starting next month, at our February meeting, we will have our February planning board meeting. We know we'll hold a public hearing at that point in time. Uh, we're looking, meeting three times unless, you know, that's kind of our plan. Should take about three times, get some background information, come up with some draft language, then agree, hopefully by consensus, on that language moving forward. That will be brought back to our full board here in May, and then on to the commissioners at a later date. So I know these plans are subject to change, that's kinda how we've laid it out. So committing to at least three of those committee meetings. Uh, any questions about the committee? Yes, sir, Mr. Arja.
Yeah, um, my concern is the reason that we are putting, sending this to the commissioners, will there be any requests coming before this board in the, in the interim? While you, uh, while you all are working in committee? Will we have requests coming forth that would, this will apply?
You're talking about additional preliminary plans coming before.
That's right.
I don't know of any right now, but there's a good possibility. You usually see one probably every two to three months. So yes, there's a real opportunity that others could be submitted.
Right. So you guys, y'all, you know, work fast.
Heads up is what you're telling me, James.
Heads up, let's go.
Any other questions?
James, not a question, but I do want to thank each one of our board members for volunteering for this, uh, committee. And also the two developers and the engineer that's gonna be joining us, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric's up next.
You did volunteer, right?
Yes, he did.
I didn't.
You did.
The record shows I didn't.
Okay, I, I agree.
Eric, I'm sorry.
Thanks, sir. Um, yeah, just a, a quick update or a little bit of a, little bit of update for our envision of Pitt County 2045. We'll talk about a few things, our completed steps that we've undertaken since the last time we met and discussed it in November. Uh, we did hold two public input meetings. One August, or November twenty-ninth at the Community Schools and Recreation Building, and one on December first at North Pitt High School. And we did have, uh, fairly good turnouts for both of those. I think we had probably close to, close to two dozen folks to each one. Um, and so we got a lot of good information from those folks. They were, uh, fairly receptive, and also were able to add some new information that we've since tried to incorporate into the plan as well. Uh, with that, we've begun developing the draft plan and the future land use map. We're currently, still reviewing that draft and trying to get it to a, a more final, um, form. And then, uh, so well, tonight I'll be kinda going through the goals and objectives a little bit and just giving you an overview of those. And then at next month's meeting, uh, that'll be your fourth and final steering committee meeting. And we're also looking to hold a public hearing on, on that night. Uh, and following that, you'll provide a recommendation, or will ask for a recommendation to send to the Board of County Commissioners, uh, for them to hear it on the twentieth of March. Uh, and so with the, the draft plan that we're reviewing right now, uh, our plan is to hopefully have it available for y'all's review, have it posted to our website by next week. Uh, so we're, like I said, we are currently going through it and trying to make those final edits and get it, uh, in a more presentable fashion. These are, uh, just a couple of pictures, uh, of those public forums that we had. This is the one at Alice Keane Park or the Community Schools and Recreation Building. Uh, then the one at, uh, North Pitt High School. Uh, as far as our draft goals and recommendations, we've been through the mission statement and the, the basic goals before. Uh, there are about seven, uh, sets of goals that we're looking at. Uh, the first is for land use and development, and that's to, um, to continue to utilize the land use plan and the land use map when we're making our development decisions. And we're, we're making recommendations, this board, for things like rezonies tonight. Uh, we'll have that, uh, use that consistently. Uh, looking to approve the subdivision permitting and approval process. Uh, like James mentioned, to, to incorporate or try to get it fine-tuned so this board's comfortable with those amendments coming for you with the, the committee. Um, looking to define residential growth areas and protect prime agricultural land so we're not approving a lot of developments that are, uh, being affected by surrounding or will have impacts, not only on the subdivisions, but also on those agricultural areas. Uh, and then a recurrent theme through most of our planning processes the last few years has been to maintain, uh, the county's rural character. And so that's a big part of it. Uh, housing and economic development, uh, consider allowances for different housing types as well as support, uh, new affordable and workforce housing initiatives. Uh, looking to promote commercial development in key locations. And then also promote the development of prime industrial land. So that would be, so we're not, not approving large-scale subdivisions in areas that are more suitable for industrial or large-scale commercial-type developments. One of the things we heard a lot of is that, and we heard tonight also, is that certain areas of the county, there's not a lot of broadband access. Uh, so, uh, looking to opportunities to expand that throughout the county. Uh, look to improve, uh, wayfinding and lighting along our major transportation corridors and recruit and support businesses to the county. Uh, cultural assets and agriculture. I continue to support programs, uh, that protect and support agriculture, those like the President Use Value System, uh, as well as the voluntary ag district program. Encourage only low-density development in prime agricultural areas, and also promote, protect the county's cultural resources. Under Parks and Community Health, uh, look to provide some, uh, more passive and active, active recreational opportunities, as well as coordinate with Board of Education and Pitt County Schools, uh, for the planning of future, of future school facilities. And those are, those sites are important also because we do have joint use agreements with schools that allow their facilities to be used for recreational opportunities as well. Uh, look to continue enhancements to the district park, uh, with the, there's a new gymnasium and community centers being proposed out there. Uh, so that'll provide more opportunities, uh, for recreation out at the park, uh, as well as improving access to recreational facilities north of the Tar River. And we're also looking at, uh, developing a new sort of park near the ag center with another gym or community center, uh, associated with that as well. Uh, improve access to healthcare and county services, so looking at areas that may need satellite services. One thing to talk about with this rezoning is that they're, they're not close to healthcare, they're not close to services. So maybe in areas like that where we need to try to, uh, recruit or try to establish some, some satellite services for those folks. Uh, then support the production of, access to and consumption of locally-produced food. Things like farmers markets, uh, increasing, uh, access to, to fresh fruits and vegetables uh, from folks that live in those areas that are considered food deserts, where they don't have a lot of grocery store options. Uh, transportation goals, uh, to improve connectivity, emergency access, and new residential development. Also to, uh, develop intersection improvements and roadway modernization needs, uh, to improve circulation and safety adjacent to school sites. A lot of this comes with the, uh, just the implementation of the comprehensive transportation plan that we've been working on. Uh, also working with the municipalities to enhance bus service throughout the county. Uh, and then coordinating with our regional partners for transportation priorities. And then also, uh, trying to enhance our subdivision street maintenance programs. And then our national environment goals, uh, looking to protect water quality and manage stormwater, uh, maintain improved drainage, and protect significant natural features like the Tar River and the existing floodplains. Uh, then increase access to outdoor assets. The biggest one being in this area, probably the Tar River. And what folks don't realize is there's not a lot of real ways to access the river. There's about a twenty-mile gap between Greenville and Washington. Uh, so there might be ways to sort of take advantage of that and to, uh, increase that access there. And then also some things you'll probably hear more, uh, about later. A targeted litter campaign to try to clean up the roadside ditches and keep people from littering and to, uh, increase any kind of enforcement efforts on littering. This is the draft land use map. Uh, what you see is the, uh, it's not too much different. I think you've seen the draft of this before when Jake was at our last steering committee meeting. Uh, what you see is the open space conservation area, that's primarily the floodplain areas. Uh, we've got an agricultural district, which is sort of the outer areas of the county. Uh, that'll transition into a rural residential, which is, uh, sort of larger lots. They're still surrounded by some working farmlands, but are beginning to sort of transition over to that subdivision or suburban, suburban-type development. Uh, then suburban residential, which is the areas that are kinda closer to the city. They must have a rural center and commercial crossroads. Those are areas at usually prominent locations, the rural centers, uh, areas like, um, Minibird, um, Wichard Road. Those places where there's, there's some existing sort of commercial services or things around there that serve that community, uh, but maybe aren't suited for any large-scale commercial development. Then the commercial crossroads, places like Stokes and Pactolus, uh, where they have existing commercial uses and services that sort of, sort of serve a, a larger surrounding area. And then also our commercial mixed-use and employment industrial, which are primarily located along those major, uh, highways like two sixty-four, uh, eleven, and, um, the bypass. And then, uh, the, that employment industrial again is also, so, so our existing industrial uses like EJ and that, that, that type of thing. Then the map also incorporates our, uh, existing plans for the Southwest Bypass and also NC forty-three. So again, those were plans that we developed just within the last five years, and we don't wanna put those on a shelf and forget about them. So we wanted to make sure that, uh, those policies and those recommendations, uh, stay in place. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to answer any questions, if anybody has anything on it.
Any questions for Eric from the board? Thank you, Eric.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Rhodes?
And again, a public hearing coming your way at your February meeting, uh, about the land use plan. We'll be looking, uh, to have a lot of this information finalized, put on the website within the next week or so. And you'll have the full draft anytime you want to look at between now and then. So, uh, remember, public hearing next month. Uh, other things, um, the work program, very busy, a lot of things going on. Uh, top of the list is to complete this envisioned Pitt County twenty forty-five plan. Uh, we hope to complete that. Uh, if it runs true to form, public hearing with you in February to the commissioners in March, and then the implementation, uh, process starts. We're still, uh, still going about work on the comprehensive transportation plan. Uh, that is probably six months out or more. You'll be hearing more about that. We've got permitting software coming online. Um, subdivision ordinance amendments, we've talked about. Stormwater ordinance amendments are coming forth. The state is requiring new regulations to be put in place, both for the TARPAM and the new spaces. Those changes will be more than likely by the end of the, uh, calendar year. Office, uh, Park Recreation Site Plan. Eric mentioned some of the things that we're looking at, uh, even through the, um, comprehensive land use plan. We're gonna be actively soliciting input. Uh, most of you are aware, we're looking at building two gymnasiums or community centers with our American Rescue Plan funds. One's being sited next to the Agricultural Center north of the river. The other one adjacent to the Community Schools and Rec- to the community schools and recreation facility on County Home Road at the district park. What we don't have is a good idea of what needs to go along with that community center north of the river, so we're going to do a special study, develop a recreation plan there on site. There's some acreage that's undeveloped. We may put some outdoor recreation facilities, walking trails, and so forth to go along with that. So that plan will be out there. You are hearing for the first time. We've got sessions set up, January 31st, February 2nd, out at two of the schools, Belvoir Elementary, Stokes Elementary, and then at the ag center on February the night. So we'll send you the details about when that's happening and what times. Farmers market site improvements, we look to make that place safer if you're out there. It's, that parking lot's kind of a concern to us. We just want to make sure we get the improvements where they need to be. We finally have federal funding, Mr. RJ Hembry, for our Hurricane Florence, four and a half years ago, Hurricane Florence buyout program. So we're working on about 16 properties to get people out of harm's way. And of course, we've got a number of community development and homeless programs that we'll be administering throughout the year. Lots of things going on. I'm sure there'll be some other items that may come up throughout the year, but those are going to be our main focus for the year upcoming. Any questions about the work program?
Looks like you've got a busy plan.
Board will be instrumental in a number of those items. The other informational items are in your package tonight. Some of those are items that you dealt with that went on to the Board of Commissioners. And, Mr. Chairman, if no one has any questions about those, that's all we have for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from the board? Anything on your mind? All minds clear for 30 days anyway, right? I will mention to Commissioner Holloman again, we're sending some work to you, okay? So thank you for being here with us, and thanks to the staff for the work that you do, day in and day out. We appreciate you. For Jordan, thank you for your services, and to each one of our board members. I appreciate each one of you, as the county does.
Thank you for, thank you for the kind, thoughtful portfolio gift this past.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I got mine right here. I'm using it, okay?
You're talking about this one? I got one too.
He got, he's all wrapped up.
I'm telling you, all right. Good deal. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
To adjourn.
To adjourn.
The meeting is adjourned.